Mr. Don.
We finally got the five of us submitting together for the chamber. So anyway, as soon as we have the first being scheduled for, I'll let you know.
You have my email, right?
Uh huh, it's gonna be in September.
Okay. Yeah, just let me know so I can get it right now.
Yep, will do.
The active duty jury, any closer to your yard?
What?
The active duty jury.
There was one chair that, it's a really bad image.
He's trying to hit the line, right?
Yeah.
He wants to go.
Yeah.
At least don't take Kennedy. He can't go high up and wants to do something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good evening. A little while since everybody here tonight, and thank you all for being here. My name is Christopher Cormick. I am the CEO of the Cedar City Chamber of Commerce. We're thrilled to be putting on this event and creating some opportunity for you to hear some different things from our candidates. One of the things that I want to reiterate as much as possible is it's important to get your vote out, even for the primary. You want to know who's gonna be back the next time you want to vote now. So please, make sure you check your ballots, sign them. If you need help signing, bring...
Vote in and vote often.
Chicago. I don't think we give you much trouble. We've asked Michelle Tollis to come up and lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance. And then we'll turn the time over to Kathy to get this started.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you know how to use the mic, right? Just move that on. So we have a total of eight questions that I'll be asking tonight. Each candidate will have one minute to answer. Michelle is our timekeeper. She will give you a motion at forty-five seconds, and then you'll have fifteen seconds left. Okay? Everybody good? We'll start the first question with Tyler and work our way down. We'll vary, and I don't know how that's gonna happen yet, but we'll figure it out. Yeah, thanks, great. Okay. So, our first question is, please introduce yourselves and explain why you have decided to run for Cedar City Council.
Okay, oh, yep, that works really well. I'm Tyler Melling, local estate planning attorney and chairman of the Chamber of Commerce. I'm gonna forego my usual speech about the issues and my qualifications. We'll get to some of those later. Not one person up here, including myself, is truly qualified in all the issues a council member faces every week. Because of that, you want someone on the council that's an adept learner, a communicator, and someone who won't give into salesmanship or avoid conflict when things get tough. You also want someone who can apply those skills in a way that safeguards taxpayer funds and applies them to the benefit of the community. Most importantly, you want someone in there who understands that their decisions determine what conditions can deprive you of liberty and property. As someone who has, is, and will continue to go outside of my own echo chamber to discuss the issues, I promise to weigh each issue with consideration of the whole community. I guarantee that I will vote differently than you from time to time, but that means I'm doing my job and listening to all members of the community, not just my friends or those who scream the loudest. Please let me know which issues matter to you. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Don Oswalt. I've lived in Cedar City now for thirty-three years, and I love Cedar. I've raised my family here. I have five kids, eleven grandkids. The reason for running for city council is I want to represent the voters, the people out there, citizens of Cedar City. I feel the government should be very limited. However, when one's desires encroach on another's rights, then government must step in and lay the framework that protects families and their property.
I'm TJ Penrod, and I'm running for city council. Obviously, I'm running for city council, otherwise I wouldn't be here. Good job. But I fell in love, oh.
It's off. Mine's off.
All right. I fell in love with Cedar City when I moved here in 2002. Came down here to go to SUU and fell in love and stayed down here and moved here officially. Bought a house here with my wife. Couple of things I would like to help us understand why Cedar City has some of the lowest wages in the state, figure out solutions to this complex issue. I want to make sure that I listen to all voices, that all voices receive representation on city council, and as a small business owner myself, I want to support small businesses and prioritize using their services whenever possible. Thank you.
I don't know what's going on there. I'm trying to figure this out. Did this? Sat now?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. My name is Barry Short. I'm a fifteen-year resident of Cedar City. And just to tell you a little bit about me, I am a longtime small business owner and entrepreneur, which is a fancy kind of pretentious word that means I don't have a boss, but I get to make decisions for myself. And what that does, when you do that, is that you learn how to do things efficiently, you learn how to do things economically, and I believe those are skills that would be very valuable on the city council. Thank you.
There you go. Okay. My name is Craig Isom, and for the last three and a half years plus, I've had the honor and privilege of representing all of you on the city council. I'm running for another term, a last term, so that I can finish some things that we got started during my tenure on council. I come with forty years of experience, CPA, and business counseling, and understand things from that perspective, from a financial and planning perspective, and believe that I have some unique skills that will be of benefit to the community if you'll reelect me.
I feel like a rock star. My name is Chris Dolan. I've lived in Cedar City for twenty-six years. I came up as part of a refugee wave back in the early nineties out of Southern California. And as I've said before, I quoted Martin Luther King. When I got up here, I was in construction down in Southern California. I had to suffer the vicissitudes of subcontracting and construction and building in one of the counties in Southern California, and it was cruel and unusual punishment. And when I got up here, I felt like I was free at last, free at last, free at last. And I've really enjoyed my stay here in Cedar City ever since then, and my skill set is I'm a believer, and a firm believer, of property rights that need to be protected on all sides, and I thank you for the time, and you'll hear more from me.
I'm Adam Haun. I'm a Navy veteran. I'm a member of the City Planning Commission, and I'm a small business owner. I believe that we must preserve property rights in order for us to have a fair city. I believe that we need to make sure that the city is listening to the citizens, and I feel that as a member of the city council, I could make some positive impact. I think that we need to make sure that we continue this great environment that we have for growth, because as the city grows, it's gonna continue to weigh on the workforce that we have here, which will only continue to drive up wages, which is exactly what we need. We need wages to continue to grow up so that we can have families that live here, grow here, and continue to thrive here. I hope to explain a little bit more about that as the night goes on. Thank you.
I am Brittany Perry, and I am a giver, a volunteer, whether it's being a mom, a PTA member, a Nissan V driver, or fighting the good fight as a Democrat. I give and work for my community. Now I am fighting for the soul of my hometown, one that is not linked to a mascot, but to the kids that grew up playing in Holcrack and spent weekends on the mountain exploring and learning to love nature. Neighborhood kids lining up on me to watch a movie in the old theater and then going to the old dollar store and looking like millionaires. And the people who found Cedar City and breathed in the magic and chose to call it home. The soul of this city is its people and how we treat each other, how we value each person's quality of life, and always that beautiful mountain that watches over us. Let's start loving each other and our city again.
Good evening. I'm Terri Hardley, and I am currently on the City Council. I've been there for three and a half years. I was born and raised here in Cedar City, and I love Cedar City and I care what happens to Cedar City. I went to school here, I went to work for Wells Fargo Bank. I recently retired as a business banker. I was there for forty-two years, which gave me a lot of qualifications that I think are helpful on the council. I'm a good listener, I'm available, I study every issue and talk to people on both sides of the issues and try and make the best decision for our citizens in general and for our whole city and for the taxpayers. I promise to be a careful steward over your taxpayer funds, and I hope to be reelected.
My name is Stephanie Flores. Sometimes I teach at SUU as an adjunct, but I also own an AE and art studio on Main Street and do art classes. I had a free art party. You guys came to that, it was awesome. I do that every year, it's great. I grew up in Cedar City. I met my former husband at Cedar High, but I graduated from Canyon View because I was, you know, when they talk about splitting two, and I went over to Canyon View, graduated in ninety-nine, went to SUU, got a BFA, went on to get an MFA from Indiana University, and then came back because I love it here. Additionally, I'm a divorced, single mom of three, and I live in a house that I share with my mom and my brother in order to afford rent. My house is so small, I share a room with my special needs child. So I am running because I don't feel like the people of Cedar City are being effectively represented.
Comedy airs. You didn't know what your Shakespeare's play, right? Okay, our second question, I'll start with Craig, go down, start with Stephanie, I'm deciding, go up. There are many issues that face our city at any given time. In your view, what do you see as the three main issues that are currently facing our city, and if elected, how would you address those issues?
We're growing, and all the issues that I see as pertinent to what we're doing are reflected in that desire to grow and desire to grow in a controlled and logical fashion. We need to continue to look for water resources, search and develop. We live in the desert where you are. Planning and development for growth, including financial planning and infrastructure planning are my second priority. I thank the chamber, and I thank them for this evening, is on a great track to help us with that planning, with their Vision 2050 project. And finally, we need to build upon the entrepreneurial and business environment that we have here in the city and create an environment that helps businesses grow and helps us grow salaries and wages and close that gap between housing costs and salaries and wages that we're paying.
I partly echo some of what Craig just said. If there's one critical thing in this community, as we all know, it's water, because we have unlimited supply, and so we're gonna have to continue to search for additional sources. We're gonna have to search for additional ways to smartly use that which we have, as we've done in the last few years, in doing a lot more to reclaim the water and keep it from getting out of our hands. So that's number one. Second one that people bring up to me time and time again is housing. I've looked at a couple of different things, and obviously, it's an extremely complex problem that we do need to indeed do some planning for. There are a couple of things that are affecting us, and some of them are things we can control and some we can't. We've got things, you know, we've got people coming in from outside who are affecting the cost, the price of our homes. We've also got growth at SUU that is impacting us, so we have to find ways to deal with that. So that's point two, and I'll get to the third one later.
I'm sorry, can you guys say your name? I know you introduced yourself, but for those of us taking notes...
Yes, thank you.
You just say your name at the beginning and then...
Barry Short, thank you.
TJ Penrod. Issues that I see facing our community right now, two of the big ones is wages and affordable housing. Right now, we have a community that's really great to move into from other places, but right now, it's a hard community to move up in. And so finding ways that we can raise our wages and find ways that are gonna be beneficial both to small businesses and our community members as well, and ways to do that and ways to bring housing costs to a manageable place for every citizen here in Cedar City. The other thing I'd like to address is recently, we've had a lot of, a big divide in our community over a mascot, and I would love to see our community start healing over this, start reaching across and visiting your neighbors, talking to your neighbors, realizing that either side of the issue is not evil but different. And that is an important part, and I think we need to start healing from that. So, thank you.
Don Oswalt, reviewing this question earlier, I had about five or six topics come to mind, so I'll just mention a few. Fixing the potholes in the streets. There are some really good-sized potholes that need to be corrected. Water, of course, has got to be one of the things at the top of almost everybody's list. Higher-paying jobs, how to bring in some companies that are willing to pay more money and to give them tax incentives by doing so. And then cooperation amongst the council, where we work together for solutions, not trying to pull the rug out from under people's feet.
As I mentioned last week, the three issues I'm looking at most are housing, business, and infrastructure, and specifically, the rules that are in place that maybe had good intentions at some point but are holding us back in those areas now. For example, we have a lot of rules about housing, what kinds of homes we can build where and how. And if we, we need to decide as a city, do we want to keep those rules in place and make peace with the fact that our kids and grandkids can't live here because of those rules? Or do we want to take a look at those and find ways that in a smart and thoughtful way, we can reassess those rules so our kids and grandkids can live here? Also, with business, we need to find ways to not be a stumbling block as a municipality for businesses that want to expand. And finally, with infrastructure, with our roads and our water, we need to look at ways as a city we can be a better partner in discussions and in policies that don't hurt us.
So I've got three main issues here that I wrote down. Housing prices and low wages, I think they go together. People can't afford to live and work here. Homelessness and poverty, we really need to recognize that, that ties into low wages and the high cost of living. But we also have issues with lack of healthcare for both mental and emotional health, as well as drug addiction and substance abuse, and we need to address that. And last but not least, Paul Cosens and his specialty interest groups.
Without question, the first issue is, the most important is our growth. We need to make sure that we have wise, careful, controlled growth. The city is currently updating our master plan, and we've got to be smart about it. We need to look about what our city wants to look like twenty years from now and plan for that. We need to work on the infrastructure, and I'm not just talking roads, sewer, water. I'm talking jobs, workforce, education, recreation, quality of life. All of those things are part of our infrastructure. Second is higher-paying jobs. I currently work on the Economic Development Board with Danny Stewart. We're looking to recruit good-paying jobs that'll bring higher wages to our area. Along those lines, I also work, have worked over the past three and a half years to compensate our city employees well. They are great employees, we've worked to bring their wages up, and we'll get to the third.
There's ten of you, twelve of you, and eight corners. That's ninety minutes.
So I'm gonna speed read through this. Our city has an accountability problem. Our city parks look terrible. We are watching our historic Main Street die. Our neighborhoods are being sold off to the highest bidder with a brand-new zone change wrapped in a bow. Ordances and codes are not being enforced, and areas of the city are treated with contempt by city employees. Where does this leave the citizens of Cedar City? I would say angry and wondering where our tax dollars are going. Better planning and training would fix some of these problems. Also, a city council that listens and puts its citizens before profit. Heroin, meth, and opiates, we have a drug problem, and it's not only the homeless and the poor that are affected. We have working, functioning members of our community that are drug addicts. They are walking a fine line between life and death. We need an inpatient drug treatment facility. We need to give our citizens the resources they need to get help. Yep? Oh, I did have a whole thing about our divided community, but TJ covered that, so I won't echo it. Oh, Brittany Perry. See, I don't have Del Rude here to remind me.
I'm Adam Haun. Of course, water is our number-one concern with the continued growth. If we want this area to continue to grow, we need the water. The city's done a great job with Recharge. We need to continue to those efforts and to continue to look at the pipeline from the Pine Valley. We also need to take a look at the way the city bids projects. I think that there should be, the city council should be presented with a good, better, best scenario with the city staff saying, okay, this is, we want to build a mascot gym, and these are three options, basically, and we estimate the cost at these three different levels. I think that we should look at that instead of just taking whatever the city staff presents and deciding on that one option. I also think that we need to lower the cost of development, because in order to attack the unaffordable housing issue that we have, we need to attack it from raw land. So if we look at ways to bring the cost of developing that raw land into homes, it'll help that issue.
My name's Chris Dolan. Everyone here, we all share a lot of the same view. We all share the views that the big problems that we do have facing are growth-generated. And because we're growth-generated, we have to plan, we have to be fiscally responsible, and all that kind of stuff, which I will be. However, I also see that we need to have a character change. We need to have a sense of leadership and a, let's get this thing done. We need to get our Port 15 movement. We need to get our parks cleaned up. I don't think they're dirty, but we just need to take care of the stuff that we have. We need to take care of the stuff that we have in a very nice way. And we have to pay attention to the dollars, we have to pay attention to our taxpayers, we have to pay attention to property rights. These are things that I will pay attention to. These are things that I pay attention to. So, I'm passing my baton on to somebody else.
Multiple chambers of commerce throughout the state are rallying for reform of the current tangible personal property tax structure and implementation. Cedar City's Chamber of Commerce is fully supportive of that effort, which you, if elected, lobby our state leaders on behalf of the local businesses to reform the tangible personal property tax. Why or why not? We'll start with Tyler, work this way, Chris, and work that way.
Since I'm starting, I'll give a little background on this tax and what it does. So, businesses that buy computers, heavy machinery, business supplies, pay sales tax on that, and then get the opportunity to pay taxes on that every year thereafter. It is the most inefficient tax we have as a state and causes more economic loss in calculating how much is owed than the state collects. This is a statewide issue. The state's chamber is really lobbying against it. County governments are lobbying for it because it would require a shift in tax structure, and counties don't like changing tax structure. But it's something that needs to happen. We need to do it. I've been working on this issue for about eighteen months with our chamber, and I continue to plan on keeping those discussions and finding ways to get our county administrators on board with championing that effort.
Don Oswalt again. I am not necessarily for this if it increases the amount that small business people have to come up with out of their own pocket, whether it's a tax increase, whether it's paying tax year after year off of an item, anything that dips into the owner, which is also a family that's usually owned a small business, that is taking money out of their pocket and giving it over to the state or whoever it is to run their thing. There are other ways to go about increasing fees by increasing dues and stuff like that to help the chambers out.
TJ Penrod. In my research of this topic in the last little while, right here, I have three, the three last years of the variation, or valuation schedules in front of me here from 2017, 2018, 2019, and they have progressively gotten more expensive as we go on. Couple of things about this taxes, some of this tax goes to fund some education, so again, I can't necessarily say that I'm completely against it, although I don't necessarily think that small businesses should be the one that has to have to shoulder this tax as well, because I agree that, again, being a small business owner myself and having to have had to pay this tax in the past is no fun. There is some changes that are currently happening with this as we speak right now with, as far as like reforming this goes, and I haven't seen those numbers and what that would be, and I'd like to reserve an official statement tone.
Barry Short. I was a retailer for twenty years. I have paid this tax. I absolutely hated it. This is a terrible tax. Imagine that you buy something and then you have to keep paying the tax on it over and over. over and over and over. That's what this is. It's lousy. It increases costs for business, which are all passed right onto the consumer. So it increases costs for everybody. And, and yeah, you're right, some of this may be being spent in a way we would approve of, but we ought to collect taxes in a much more honest manner than this. This just seems dishonest. It, yeah, it's a way of hiding something and not being upfront about why it's being collected and where it's going. And I really firmly believe in transparency. So the answer to, would I lobby against this? The answer is not yes, it is hell yes.
Craig Isom and I agree with Barry. I know of no tax that is any more duplicative or aggressive than this tax. I had a contractor sitting in my office the other day and I asked him about this. He says, what a deal. I pay tax when I buy equipment and then I get to pay taxes every year as I use that equipment and continue to pay those taxes. Makes no sense. And as has been stated, the tax flows through to you and I or whoever it is that's consuming what is being provided. And if we delude ourselves into thinking other than that, it is a tax that we need to fight against and I would be very happy to lobby against it just because of the nature of it.
My name's Chris Dolan. I've had to pay this tax. It is a problem. You have to do the accounting. You have to assess it. You have to figure out how much your equipment's worth. You have to put it on a form. You have to send it in on time. If you don't send it in on time, you get penalized. If you don't pay it, you get penalized. And it is a nuisance tax. It is a plain nuisance because it doesn't happen at regular tax time. You gotta do it in May. And in some states, they have nuisance taxes five times a year. And so I say, ax the tax. And, and I would love to have a city campaign saying, ax the tax. And we would send that up through the state. We would make it part of our TV programming, ax the tax. That's my feelings. So thank you very much.
I think the worst thing that we've done or allowed to be done to us as Americans is have the government collect property tax. And I'm talking about all property tax. I'm talking about our, your home, as well as this tangible personal property tax. It eliminates ownership. It creates renting is what it does. If you don't believe me, don't pay the tax. See what happens. The taxmen will come and take your stuff. It's criminal. And I, I think that we should not only do away with this one, we should look at reforming our whole tax structure. Obviously, city council can't do that, but we, I hope that we can lobby for individuals that would, that would support that restructuring, our tax structure so that we can move away from a property tax, so that we're not punishing people for what they own, but move towards a consumption tax where we're attached on what we actually spend. Thank you.
I have a, ax the tax. I didn't, yeah. A lie is that.
Brittany Perry. To be completely honest, I had no idea what this tax was or who paid it. After a little research and a visit to an accountant friend, my takeaway is that it is not an overly burdensome tax, but more of a nuisance and not a high revenue generating tax. With that said, I would support changes to this tax or even eliminating it. However, this would not be a high priority for me. There are things that I consider life and death important that I will be lobbying for. You all thought I was going to support it. You don't, Democrats, as well as you think.
Good luck, Paul.
Terry Hartley. I am in support of reducing or well, actually increasing the limitations on that and lobbying for this local small business. In saying that, I do have some concerns because the way it is applied to large corporations in the state. Currently, it does provide an income stream to our local governments to provide services that we enjoy. So we need to be careful about unintended consequences as we move from a tangible personal property tax. Usually what happens is a tax shift is what they call it. So you remove that tax burden and it just goes to somewhere else and it's spread over the entire tax base. Because what we really need to do is look at how to spend less money so they don't need such an income stream. So we need to carefully evaluate that. The small businesses for sure. I think it's a nuisance tax.
Stephanie Flores. I pretty much agree with everything everyone said here. I have paid this tax also. It's super annoying. It's not a huge revenue getter. I do, I, what Terry was just saying about where we're going to have that loss in revenue, we might have to pick it up somewhere else. So I don't know that it would necessarily be an increase in taxes that you would see as much as you're paying somewhere else. Right? But I think eliminating it or, you know, reforming it is great, but I also like the idea of lobbying the state to transfer the authority of these taxes over to the county itself so that the voters here in Iron County can decide how those taxes are collected and on what? If we keep them.
Okay. We'll start, this time we'll start with Craig, go down this way and Stephanie, go this way. Our city is growing and will continue to grow. It is inevitable. How do you plan to manage growth so that our infrastructure, mainly water and roads, will not be negatively impacted?
It's all a function of, Craig Isom, all a function of planning and staying ahead of the growth, which our engineering department is doing a pretty goddamn good job doing, planning for sewer and water flow and other things. I support the staff, but I support a long-term plan. We have in the city a plan to plan and we need to apply that and actually do long-range planning. Commit ourselves to the infrastructure that we need to sustain the growth. Growth is important to all of us in the community. If you don't have growth, you just die. But we need to control it and we need to control that. So once again, I bring to your attention Vision 2050 that is being developed on the chamber. I think it's a great starting point.
I would question the degree to which one can control growth. Growth happens. It happens many times in ways that we do not anticipate. And in fact, we're living in a very rapidly changing world where, to be honest, if you picked out a master plan that was drawn up 20 years ago and looked at it now, you would probably see very many things that are no longer applicable at all. One of the things that we're looking at in the very near future is a real transition on transportation. As we see more and more automation going on there, you know, we have huge amounts of property around this city that's dedicated to parking. That may be obsolete 20 years from now. So while I believe it's important for us to plan and, and, and look at trends and understand what's going on, we need to make very certain that we're not putting things into concrete that are going to get us into trouble because we're spending our money in exactly the wrong ways.
TJ Penrod. I, you know, being a business owner, a plan is a very important thing to have. You have to, you know, a six-month plan, a year plan, three-year plan, a five-year plan, 10-year plan, all that kind of stuff. You don't have one of those that, you know, you're not going to go very far. Also with that, also needs to come flexibility and understanding, being able to again, reach out, what does our community want? What, what do, what do US voter need in this planning session or what, like how we can make that happen? But again, just, I, I support, yeah, I agree with Barry. The growth is inevitable. We are growing fast. We're going to be growing and we don't want to have some of the same problems that happened in St. George happen here in Cedar City. And yes.
Growth is inevitable. However, without water and proper planning, we will be in serious trouble. Water's at the limelight of effective growth, as well as the, make sure that we plan for the wider streets to accommodate and traffic flow. I mean, visualize the amount of traffic Cedar City's going to have here in 20 years or 50 years. We got to plan now, come up with an effective master plan that won't look like a stranger 20 years down the road.
I think when it comes to growth, once again, identifying the rules that are in place that are making us grow inefficiently. For example, frontage requirements. If you look at an R1 development with 75-foot frontage requirements, your cost of not only of putting in the infrastructure, but maintaining that infrastructure is much, much higher than say, a development that has a 30 or 40-foot frontage requirement. That's half the amount of asphalt and piping and electrical per unit. And that cost is passed on to the taxpayer and to the consumer. So we need to look at legalizing more of those types of developments. Also with water, as we grow, it actually helps a lot of our water problems because residences use a lot less water than farmland. So in addition to some of the other things with our conservancy district with water, community education on water savings is going to go a long way.
Stephanie Flores. I think a lot of the comments that were already made, I agree with. Developing a master plan that's taking into consideration the future, recognizing what may become obsolete and planning for that and being flexible with what, what that plan is. I think that's really, I know that sounds kind of general, but without, without going into and actually doing the research and looking at details and what other cities and stuff are doing, I don't know that I can give you more than that. But I agree with that. We need to, we need to have a good master plan that's flexible and, and stick to it.
Terry Hartley. Going to focus specifically on a couple of things. Water is very important. I sit on the board of the Central Island County Water Conservancy District. Prior to me being there, through a lengthy litigation, they acquired water rights in the Wawa and Pine Valleys. We are actively working now, planning for water for the next 50 years for Cedar City. This year, we purchased property to put the well on it and also started the environmental impact study. And we are starting the land negotiations to be able to put that line to Cedar City. The other thing is economic development. We're trying to put the, I sit on that board. We are trying to get tools in the hands of Danny Stewart so he can actively pursue those companies that have the values that we want for our community and they're not big water users. They pay higher wages and bring in capital investment to our community.
Brittany Perry. Obviously, planning for our future. That means being smart with how we're building now. Our infrastructure, I'm very concerned with high-density buildings going into very old neighborhoods and being tapped into old water and sewer. Do impact fees cover those and may need to be replaced or is that burden put on the regular taxpayer? That concerns me. I've done a lot of research on infrastructure and then I came across green infrastructure and it blew my mind. Rain gardens, living architecture. Paul, you were complaining about water drainage at the animal shelter. Look into rain gardens for that back corner. We, we need our traffic flow, obviously. I grew up on 100 East. I know how awesome it is to live on a wide street. So planning, infrastructure and the impact that our building is having on it.
We have a perfect, Adam Hahn. We have a perfect thing to look at and that is St. George. Because 20, 30 years ago, St. George was smaller than Cedar City and now look at what it's done. So we can look at, to our neighbor to the south and see what kind of growing pains they went through. Primarily, what I've been focusing on is, is traffic flow. Main Street and 200 North is set up to be just bumper-to-bumper traffic here in 20 years. We need to make sure that we have good traffic flow through the main part of town and that means that we're going to need to get creative in the way that we're, we're widening roads and adjusting traffic flows. We also need to make sure that we're not, or that we're planning for traffic flow throughout the rest of the county or the rest of the valley. I know that there's an area in the valley that we're, the city's looking at buying lands so that they can widen it out to a 100-foot road. That may not be appropriate. We might need to take a look at making that road narrower, adding more roads so that traffic flows appropriately through there because I wouldn't want a 100-foot wide road in my backyard.
These are all important things to talk about. One of the things that really require in a growth situation is financing. We got to put finances and our finances in play. And the city really has a very large lever in being able to assist in the financing, both in, with personal, with its ability to borrow, with its ability to create policies that makes it a friendly environment, make it possible. To be able to put our infrastructure in and advance infrastructure, it needs help with, our cities need help by business. It needs help by development. It needs, it's got to be a partnership. And the city has to be a partner in this kind of stuff with all the business interests that needs to go forward as well. Without the partnership of both business and city, it's going to be a very bumpy and rough road. Okay? Which is bad planning.
We'll start with Tyler, work this way, Chris, that way. The inland port in Salt Lake County looks to be an economic boom to our state economy. Port 15 here in Cedar City should great, should benefit greatly from the inland port. Port 15 has been designated an opportunity zone, allowing for tax incentives for businesses to move to our area and take advantage of the infrastructure around it. If elected, how would you support efforts to increase usage of Port 15 and encourage business growth in that area?
Tyler Milling. This is, as the chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, this is an issue that's been on my radar for some time. I think one of the key things we're looking at with Port 15 and being marketable to these companies is one of them being the tangible personal property tax. The big payers of that tax are the companies that will be utilizing Port 15. So we need to find a way to, if, if we're going to tax them like crazy, we need to at least find a way to do it more efficiently because that's a horribly inefficient tax. Second, when businesses are trying to expand here, we need to find ways to not be their number one roadblock. You talk to bankers that are giving out commercial loans, they will tell you the city is the number one enemy when trying to expand. And that's because I feel that sometimes our city staff are so far removed from the economic repercussions of their decisions that there's no hold on it. The council's job is to place some limits on that power and find ways to make it easier for businesses to grow when they're trying to add jobs.
Don Oswell. We need to give the Economic Development Division in the city, headed up by Danny Stewart. We need to give them the teeth to be able to go out and the tools to recruit businesses in here. The opportunity zone at West is a great idea. I like the idea of being able to bring in higher-paying jobs, companies with the higher-paying jobs, and then give them a tax incentive that is based on how high the wages they're willing to pay. If they're willing to pay $2 over the median, they get a little bit of a tax break. If they're willing to pay $5, they're going to get an even better tax break. And if they're willing to pay $10, they're going to get a great tax break.
TJ Penrod. Yeah, I think we, we have a great opportunity with Port 15 to be utilized to benefit our city. A couple of things I think would be really good is kind of what Don is saying is tax incentives that are, that the city can give to these businesses that would use Port 15. I think we can also look at those businesses that are coming in and use those tax incentives to create better wages. Not just for a handful of people in the new businesses that are coming in, but for employees across the board in these new businesses. I think that should be something that is considered. And yeah, utilizing that and being able to develop Port 15, I think is, is an important aspect of growth in our city. And being able to bring in some of these higher-paying jobs and more industrialized jobs would be very helpful. And being able to bring in some of these higher-paying jobs and more industrialized jobs would be very helpful.
Mary Short. I had a chance to sit down with Danny Stewart last week and talk quite a bit about some of the things that are going on out in Port 15 and some of what's coming down the rail. And I can tell you, there's some things that look pretty good down there. But I want to suggest to you that there's a better way of doing this than tax incentives. Because tax incentives are a temporary thing. They're, you know, they're like a little treat that you're supposed to jump up and grab but then it's gone. I think the way to really make ourselves a magnet for companies is to have the lowest possible cost of doing business here. That means low taxes, that means low regulation, the kind of regulation that gets in their way and costs. We're not talking about doing things that are dangerous, of course, that would be irresponsible. But as far as the day-to-day cost of doing business, I can guarantee any large business that's thinking about coming here is gonna be looking at their day-to-day cost of doing business regardless of these tax incentives. And that's the thing that we have that we can really sell this community with.
Craig Isom. Port 15 is a gem in our neighborhood. It's a great opportunity for economic growth and expansion. Infrastructure's in place. We can develop it and bring businesses here to do business and help all ships rise by having the economy be more healthy and vibrant and thriving. The opportunity zones that are spoken of, this is a federal program and provides federal tax benefits that really are encouraging people with capital to come and invest in our rural setting and in an economically, perhaps relatively speaking, environment. We need to work with Danny to reach out to the people who have the cash that would invest in Port 15 and build factories and business offices and other things so that we can have more jobs with higher wages.
This is where I think we get to put our money where our mouth is. Because I believe Port 15 is really so important and it hasn't moved yet. I mean, we're trying to make it move, but we're coming to an economic cycle and I really believe we need all hands on deck. And I don't think we need to give tax incentives either. You've got a state just west of us throwing so many different roadblocks to businesses and so many regulations that they would love to get out of there if they had an opportunity to get out of there. I think we need to be able to help and volunteer. I could really think the city council ought to volunteer for Danny Stewart and have Danny Stewart put us to work. And why I say all hands on deck, find volunteers out of the community that help expand the effort to recruit, identify companies, identify the profiles of companies that we'd wanna recruit. And I really believe it's an all-hands-on-deck concept we need to do. Thank you.
Well, I'm with Chris on this one. We need to not use taxpayer funds to incentivize this because all we really need to do is task Danny Stewart and give him the resources he needs to go to California and lure those companies here. How hard would that be? You give them a list, hey, look, this is all the taxes you're paying living here in California. And look, you can cut all of that out by moving your jobs to Cedar City. It would be very easy to do, I think. I think we could incentivize companies to move here. But I think that using taxpayer funds to incentivize that is inappropriate. I think that's picking winners and losers. I think that we need to make sure we also incentivize or that we focus on local entrepreneurship and encourage people to grow businesses here locally and not just bring them from out of town.
First, Brittany Perry. First, I do not support the state, how the state legislature went about getting the inland port. And I will only support tax incentives if the company can prove that a majority of its employees are making livable wages, not just a handful of the upper-level employees. Stop selling out our citizens for good numbers on jobs. If they can't pay livable wages, then they can afford to pay their taxes. We bring jobs here by making our city valuable to live in, by selling our great location on I-15 and our rail system, by making Cedar City a top designation to visit and live in. We have the tools to make Cedar City a thriving city if we can support and uplift our tourism industry while also investing and bringing in top-paying manufacturing jobs to the area. Stop thinking so small, Cedar City. We should be one of the best-performing cities in the state.
Teri Hartley. I am really excited about the potential that we would have our Port 15 as an inland port. And when the governor announced the Opportunity Zone layered on top of that, it's the perfect marriage. We already are trying to recruit good companies to come in there. And literally, these opportunity zones, they've been a catalyst. There's hundreds of investment funds looking for places to put capital for these tax incentives. But nationally, there are 8,700 opportunity zones competing for these companies that are looking to move or expand to different locations. Cedar City is not the only beautiful, wonderful place to live. The competition is intense. I've worked for years with Danny Stewart on this and we need to use those incentives very carefully. We've created a tool that measures those incentives and makes them fair and equitable based on our community values. And I'm excited for this opportunity.
Stephanie Flores. I have a question. I really like what Teri was saying. Can I give her my time?
Let's see, I shortened my answer a little bit. Port 15 is located out west of Cedar City on Highway 56. And it's a development. It was a cooperation, an RDA. The Levitt Group cooperated in it. The State Trust Lands cooperated in it. It's got rail access out there and we actively recruit commercial industrial properties to go in there. So if we become an inland port, basically what that means is Utah will be like the hub and they'll name these spokes, which we would be a spoke. And basically, our ports are backed up on the seaports. And this would allow all of that freight to come in and clear customs on an inland port and it would bring industry to Cedar City, so.
Okay, this time we'll start with Craig. Go down to Tyler. Stephanie, this way again. Governor Flumix. Iron County, of which Cedar City has the largest population, writes 27 out of 29 Utah counties for per capita income. What steps will you take as a city councilperson to encourage economic growth and help increase wages in our community?
Craig Isom. It starts with Port 15 and building up a business base, but it goes further than that. We can either hunt or garden. We can go out and hunt and try and get large corporations to come and locate here or we can garden what we have in town and make it grow and help it develop. And I'm a gardener and so is Danny Stewart. We work on the Iron County Economic Development Committee together. And I think we need to create higher-paying jobs by, first of all, attracting technology-based businesses, having a better broadband available so the technology will want to come here. And we can pay people more and raise the level of our per capita income by building jobs based upon what we've got in town already. Let's help what we have grow.
Mary Short. Well, first of all, let's remember that there's per capita income, but then there's your net also, which means that if we can actually cut our costs a little bit, then that raises everybody's net. So that's one of the things that we can look at. As far as jobs, you know, again, we're in a very interesting time in this country. We are talking about Port 15 and the jobs that it might bring in. But if you're talking about manufacturing and that sort of thing, there are a lot fewer jobs in manufacturing than there were even 15 or 20 years ago because we've got automation going on, we've got all sorts of things, and the jobs that are there are very different from what they once were. What we're living in now, for the most part, is the gig economy. And Craig mentioned, you know, internet speed. That's certainly something we want to look at because people are working from home and they're working from home in many different ways. And we need to make sure that we're not a tripping point for that. We want to encourage it.
TJ Penrod. Yeah, I think finding ways to utilize Port 15 in a more effective way, some of the things that you've heard of here as well. I think this is an issue that several people will need to be brought to the table to discuss and talk about. Business owners, wage workers, all that. We all need to come to the table with ideas of how to increase wages in Cedar City and look at how to do things differently than what we have been doing to increase our wages. We have an opportunity for Cedar City to look up into Silicon Slopes that's happening up in Salt Lake and figure out what they're doing up there to have those businesses come in because those are other high-paying jobs that if we could find a way to tie into that, we might be able to bring some of them down here as well. But being able to, you know, like I think that as soon, if we can encourage one business to come in that's gonna start paying more livable wages, higher wages than free market will work and start driving people to wanna work at that business as well. So, thank you very much.
Don Oswal. If Port 15 continues to grow and we can get those companies in there, that's a plus. But there's also other areas amongst the community that can also continue to grow. And by having that tax incentive based on performance, then the more people, the more money people make, the more they're gonna spend. They're gonna be able to afford to go purchase their own home, which then, of course, they're gonna pay taxes on. They're gonna pay the property tax. They're going to spend more money in the local stores. And it's just a way of recycling itself and making more use out of the employees, not necessarily the owner having to pay taxes.
Tyler Milling. What we need is a cultural shift within our city administration. Right now, we have a city that looks for ways to say no. We need a city that looks for ways to say yes. No amount of work Danny Stewart does is going to help if we try to put stumbling blocks in front of everybody who is expanding their business here. You look at the Clarion that just remodeled. They put a hundred, sorry, a million dollars into the city. They got their plans approved to put a bistro in, no grease trap required. That's one of the reasons they did it, is a bistro, not as a restaurant. Code enforcement came by after they reopened and said, where's your grease trap? It would cost $80,000 to tear up all of their new improvements and redo it. And they pushed back hard and they won. But we need a city that we don't have to fight against to find progress. And only then will Danny Stewart's work mean anything.
Stephanie Flores. I think surprisingly, I agree with what Tyler was just saying about the city administration not putting in, what'd you say, stumbling blocks? I agree with that. I think that's a really good point. And I think it was Craig Isom that said that he's a gardener and I agree with that too. So, implementing programs that help our local businesses grow as well as bring in more businesses from outside. That's what we need to do. And technology is the future. Port 15, I don't know if that's set up for technology or not for businesses like that, but we certainly have a lot of areas in Cedar City that would be, that would be available for that kind of stuff. And there's no reason why we can't have that.
Teri Hartley. I'm gonna circle back a little bit to the tax incentives. I want to emphasize, I am for post-performance. So I'm gonna use an example of GMPAC. When they came in, we have given them tax incentives and look how they've grown, look how many employees. I couldn't quote the numbers that they went from, but they have to perform before they get any of those tax incentives. So at the end of the year, they come in, they give us a report and say, hey, we've paid higher jobs, we've brought more jobs, we've brought capital investment, we build more buildings. And then they collect the tax incentives after they've proven all these things that they brought to the city. The other thing I want to expand more on the opportunity zones, not only is Port 15 in the opportunity zone, part of downtown Cedar City and on the east bench is in there too. And it encompasses the area that we're targeting for the Vision 2050. And we're hoping that that can bring some great investors in for that too.
Brittany Perry. I think we're primed to take tech out of California with our national parks, but the fact is, is they're not gonna come here and tell our education system's better. We can't educate their kids and they're not gonna come here. I have lots of ideas. Part of it is getting storefronts, our storefronts on Main Street need to have actual restaurants and stores in them to bring our downtown alive. We need to help our local businesses. And then if we'll go down a rabbit hole with me, we need to grow hemp. We can grow it hydroponically. There's all these ways to grow it with very little water. And then our state, our city, invest in the factories that turn it into toilet paper, paper towels, biodegradable plastic. Green is the future and Cedar City can supply this country with its toilet paper.
Adam Hahn. We need to work with SUU and the Southwest Applied Technology College here in town. Because when I look at Silicon Slopes, my family still lives up there in that area. And one of the big driving forces of all those tech industries coming into the area were the workforce. So we need to work with SUU and the tech college, make sure that we are educating the workforce worthy of those tech companies to come here so they're not bringing their outside employees in, but they're coming in knowing that there's a workforce here ready to go to work. We also need to continue to work at improving the workforce for the skilled labors and trades. If you ask anybody, they're hiring. Everybody's hiring. You just can't find people to do the job or you can't find people with the skills to do the job. So I don't think that we need to worry too much. I think wages are gonna be coming up because the workforce is small. And when the workforce is small, you have to pay more for the labor.
When the Cedar City, I was here when Cedar City was promoting trying to expand into tech business. And the difficulty was we didn't have enough tech support in our employment base. And so that's when we have to go hand-in-hand with the university. And the university's always been very helpful. The university always wants to be a partner with Cedar City. And so this gives another opportunity for Cedar City to find and develop and maintain a positive relationship and partnership with another very, very important entity in this community. And it's a jewel of an entity, that is a four-year university. And so this gives us an opportunity. And once again, this is all hands on deck. We need volunteers. We need people to come forward and have ideas and we need to expand on them and act and work like we can get it done.
In 2018, Iron County Car and Share housed 542 individuals and families in their emergency temporary shelter. That is just a portion of the homeless population in Cedar City. What do you see as the role of the city council in attempting to alleviate homelessness in Cedar City?
I need to be educated on that. I was gonna wait for Tyler to salt talk so I could be educated.
Tyler Milling. This is a problem I'm acutely aware of. I do estate planning. You would think that I only deal with the wealthy. I deal with the destitute as well. A lot of people who could not afford the court costs of probate so they're looking for ways to avoid it so their kids don't have to keep a mortgage payment up for six months while we're waiting on the courts. It's a big issue. I think one of the biggest disservices we do to our community is affordable housing is only affordable rent. And I think we need to look at more ways to build affordable buildings that we can afford to buy. So even someone who is making $15 an hour full-time, they need to be able to qualify for something that they can own. Now, we can do that through subsidies, which I'm opposed to, or we can do it through ways that... Or we can do it through ways that simply remove the red tape and in building the types of buildings they can afford.
Affordable housing is, Don Oswal, I'm sorry. Affordable housing is almost a double-edged sword sometimes. Some of these people will never be able to purchase a home. So they're going to have to rent. I know a lot of people that have rented, rented, rented their whole life. The other problem that we have here in town is that a large majority of the people that are in the shelters have drug addiction problems. And we need to address that issue as well to make sure that we are trying to correct the situation and get them on their feet where they can go out and maintain, hold down a job and then be able to afford at least a rent.
TJ Penrod. First thing I think the city council needs to do is acknowledge that we have this issue. I think a lot of times in this community, we tend to bat our eyes that this is an issue in our town and it is an issue in our city. We need to acknowledge that that is an issue. We need to work with the people that are already working on this issue in finding ways that they are doing that are helping the homeless people in our community and help them and support them in every way that we can. The next thing we need to do is also we need expansion on support for mental health here in Cedar City. We have several therapists who are at their caseload right now who cannot take any more patients because they have their caseload. And so we need to also be looking into ways that we can expand mental health in our community as well. But yes, thank you for asking this question.
Eric Short. I don't think there's unfortunately a city in this country that isn't dealing with this problem. And I don't know of anyone that's come up with a great solution to it unfortunately. This is just a big systemic thing throughout, you know, the entire nation. And maybe it's a little bit cultural. I can't say. What I can say to you in this, and I mean, maybe I'm going to sound like a broken record here, but I want to leave as much money in your hands as I possibly can when I'm making financial decisions for this city. One of the NPR economic shows did a report on the entire welfare system. And what they discovered of it is that ninety percent of the money that's taken by government for welfare goes into the overhead of running the system. I think we're a lot better off if I leave the money in your pocket and let you put it someplace where it'll do some good.
Craig Eisen. I thank TJ for his comments because this is a problem that is kind of out of sight and out of mind. And we need to address it. We are doing some small things annually with grants, building affordable housing, but at a very slow rate. We need to probably look hard at how we give incentives to developers and create incentives that cause them to, while they are developing other properties, also investing in low-income housing. So we overcome the supply and demand problem. We just don't have a proper supply of low-income housing. And that problem needs to be solved.
Craig, sorry.
Okay. As we all know, this is a difficult conversation. This is difficult to have. It's difficult to try to figure out all the roads that can kind of lead to some solution. Cedar City, I thought, has, and I've been involved to some extent in years past, with Cedar City's Housing Authority, which is Cedar City's attempt to deal with some of this homelessness. And it's not all drug-related. We've got seniors that are only collecting six hundred dollars a month trying to live on their own. I mean, that's very hard. They're not going to go out and get a job. They, you know, they're not going to get reformed. I mean, it's not that. We've got these kinds of issues in Cedar City. We have to deal with them. We can't throw people out. We live with them. We can't bury them before they die. And so we've got to deal with it. I'm not sure how to do it, but we have plenty of people with some good ideas and we... I'll leave that.
Adam Hahn. I think that the Care and Share provides a wonderful service to this community and I think it needs to be invested in and expanded. I'm not saying that we need to take taxpayer money to do that. I think that there's a lot of very giving, open, big-hearted individuals in this town. And we need to start a campaign to fundraise for that Care and Share. I know this because my daughters will do a lemonade stand and they'll put up big signs. There's a hundred percent of the money goes to the Care and Share. People will stop by and drop fifty dollars into the jar. People care. So we need to give them an opportunity to donate, give them an opportunity to invest. And I think that we can go a long way to helping this short-term issue of people being on the street and then working toward reform. And then, like I said before, we need to make sure that we're attacking the barriers to development, the high cost of to start to turn raw land into developed property. The cost of housing starts there.
Brittany Perry. I can't think of something more that I would want my tax dollars going towards. I deliver mills on mills. I have a speech, a Michelle Obama-inspired speech I give to convince some of our seniors to take their mills because they can't pay for them and they feel like they should. And I know that. I see their homes and I know they're on the edge. I am so concerned about the growing homeless youth we have. We are going to need a homeless youth center soon. They can't go into adult shelters. And it breaks my heart. Those are my kids. I love them. I'm fortunate enough that I've been able to meet with the people that are doing the good work under the radar. And I think the best thing the city council can do is listen to them, bring them to the table, find out what we need to do to continue helping this community. And we can learn from the mistakes that Salt Lake City made with what they've done with their homeless.
Teri Hartley. I agree, we need to work at putting a roof over people's heads before we worry about how they're ever going to buy a home. We have a homeless problem. We've got over four hundred homeless children in our school district alone. I've worked on a project raising money to buy shoes, to just put shoes on these children so they can go to school. We've got a problem there. Wonderful director Peggy with the resources that she has at the Care and Share. She does wonderful things. We need to work on making development of these projects. There are many state and federal programs. Libertad out on the golf course. Even though everyone hates where it is at out there, that is a wonderful project. I got out there and met with them and found out how that works, how they put that together. We need to work on bringing one of those projects to Cedar City. Okay, so Stephanie Flores again. And don't hate me Kathy or Peggy. Peggy, do you want to tell us? No? Okay. Now your platform? Okay. Peggy knows about this and I just want people in the community to get up and talk as much as they can. Sorry. I'll talk for you. It's okay. Thanks for the permission. I'm concerned about the ideas with the homeless purchasing homes. When I hear that about making homes, building them in such a way where they can afford them, I hear coffin box living. And that's an issue with quality of life. And quality of life is a big factor in homelessness. It's not a solution. I'm sorry. I don't agree with that. But we do have low-income housing. I think we need more of that. And I think the city can implement legislation or ordinances to provide more of that. Mental health, substance abuse centers. Oh my gosh, there's so many things here. Okay.
We'll start with Craig. Go this way. And then start with Stephanie. Go this way. Median income in Iron County supports housing costs of a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Median home prices are now at two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Approximately a thirty thousand dollar difference. If elected, what actions would you take to bridge the housing to income gap?
Craig Eisen. As I indicated before, I think the answer to this is improving wages. Our median wages here are low relative to other rural counties. Per capita income is low. We're a fifth from the bottom actually. And so I would, my solution would be to create jobs, higher paying jobs, and bridge that gap between cost of living and the wages being paid. There is a program that the Governor's Office Economic Development is proposing, has proposed, called RLI. And it's a rural outreach initiative. And it's trying to connect Wasatch Front businesses with rural settings.
Eric Short. I think one of the first things we need to recognize is that the price of homes and the median income aren't necessarily a direct relationship in any particular location. The price of homes here is driven by many factors that are outside of our local area, particularly the move-ins who are coming in from cashing out much more expensive homes than what we have here, where a two-hundred thousand dollar home here in Iron County looks like a bargain. So those two things aren't necessarily connected. At the same time, I think it's great to be looking at ways to increase people's income, to be able to increase the amount of our income that we get to keep in our pockets as opposed to going off to other expenses. So there are a lot of things we can do, but let's not start with what I think is a false equivalency.
TJ Penrod. I'm just going to go back to what I said earlier. Cedar City is easy to move into but hard to move up in. And part of that is because our wages are so low. And we're talking like fifth from the bottom. I know Craig just said that, but fifth from the bottom in the state of Utah. We have some of the highest job growths in the state, but yet our wages do not match that in the slightest. And so finding a way to really work and find ways to make wages higher in our city needs to be a priority. That, like, working at finding ways that make housing more affordable for everyone. Again, like Barry said, it's easy. You know, you sell your house in California, moving to Cedar City sounds like a dream, right? You could live a long time on that. But for us here in Cedar City, it's a hard move. And so we have to figure out ways to help promote our wages to rise and help promote the average citizen to be able to move into a house.
Don Oswal. I don't think Cedar City is alone in this dilemma that we have with the wide range of affordable housing. Of course, higher wages would help significantly correct that situation. The other thing that would be immediate as far as the city would be able to do would be the either reduction or cancellation of impact fees, starting immediately.
Tyler Melling. If you look at our job growth over the last several years, the vast majority, the majority of it is in government education and construction. And the construction, because we have those government and education job growth as well as retirees coming here. In my mind, that's not real job growth. So we need to see more private sector job growth outside of the construction industry. That's only going to happen if we make it easier for people to start a business here and grow a business here, as well as make it easier to build a home that they can build in their price range. As part of that, I've been working on a number of entrepreneurship initiatives through the chamber. And one quick story with the building side. Recently, we had a home being built eight inches past the setback. The city made them tear down that entire wall at a cost of forty thousand dollars. And that went to the homeowner. The builders don't absorb that cost. Homeowners do. We need to find ways to make exceptions when they make sense.
Stephanie Flores. I want to know why the cost is so high building a house. And I really wonder if it has to do with the profit margin, honestly. I don't think that reducing or eliminating impact fees is going to make housing more affordable. That's just not enough of a difference. And I really want to know why they cost so much, why it's so expensive. And I question that. And I also want to know why our wages are so low. Why are people not paying more? And I think it's because people are so desperate for work that they'll work for, you know, below living wages. And I don't know what to do about that because you have to have a job to pay your bills to survive. So I question the employers. But yeah, lower housing costs and higher wages.
Teri Hartley. I agree with Barry. Those two things are not related. We do need to do and we can work on bringing companies into Cedar City and bring wages up. Housing, I'm a business advocate. I've done it my entire career. That's a product of the market. So whatever the market is bearing, whatever is happening there is pretty hard for the city to control. We can make processes easier, which we have updated things through our building department and whatnot. It made a lot of progress. We have great employees in there that work hard to get these projects through. Are they infallible? No, they're human mistakes can be made. But it's pretty hard for us to control anything to do with the cost of housing other than bringing some of those incentive projects in there, federal or state-supported.
Brittany Perry. I really don't know how to fix that problem. I would say stop turning down the houses that millennials want to live in. Turn down the little old houses. A lot of us are not having large families. And I guess the other, and I don't know if the city can control this, but encourage builders to start building small family homes that are much more affordable for my generation. And until we can get the wages up, I don't see how this problem will be fixed.
Adam Hahn. We need to attack the regulations that are hurting development, one of which is ductile iron piping for water pipes. Cedar City is the only municipality in Southern Utah that requires it. There's a developer out in the valley that's building development. Added two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to development. That's twenty thousand dollars per lot that directly passed on to the end user. We need to reexamine that. Why are we the only ones that require it? The county, the city, or the county Enoch, St. George, none of them do. We also need to look at building, or what the engineering department is requiring about our developers. Another subdivision is being put in. Engineering department said, we want to make sure that nobody puts a driveway onto this street. So put a wall in. That costs twenty-two thousand dollars. There's no building code. There's no ordinance that required it other than the city engineer said, this is what I want. So we need to make sure that we're being builder-friendly, allowing developers to develop property in an inexpensive manner.
I don't see a city solution for some of this, but here's what the city can facilitate. Facilitating is to help. It gets the can-do kind of attitude. We can help. And we do have the Economic Development Department. That's helping. We can continue that helping. We can have the building department helping. We can have everybody wanting to help. But we cannot drive our prices of our housing down. It is a function of market, but we can help with the function of land cost. We can, I mean, by function of land cost is the city can use, once again, financing power to be able to extend infrastructure out before the developer and/or into an area that the city wants to see developed. And by having more lots available, it drives the economic rule, supply and demand comes into play. Right now, we are dealing with a severe shortage of land. So, thank you.
That is all I have. The candidates have agreed to stick around. So if you would like to come and talk to any of them, you are welcome to. Thank you for coming. Thank you everyone for being here.